Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Mid Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' Meeting, Wednesday, May 11, 2011. Commissioner Kukowski has the dog today.
I got a spunky one today. She's really cute. She's a four-month-old black lab mix. She really, really needs a home. She's been there since April 30th, so she would love for somebody to come to the Dog Pound and pick her up and take her home. It's such an inexpensive way to make your family so happy. She has a lot of energy, so she could go for walks with her every day and really bond with her since she's still so young. We do have 42 dogs at the pound currently, so we need some help and have our county residents come out and pick out a pet, a dog for one of you. I'm sure there's somebody out there that's gonna love you. Girl, sorry. Alright, thank you very much. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
At 9:45 we'll have the Public Hearing on the Schroeder Ditch, under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Yes, 404 for the Children and Family Services. I'd like to get more information on that. Actually, they're transferring funds, it's going from two other expenses, and that's the only thing listed.
Mr. Cordez?
I'm sorry, which one was that? It was 404 Children's and Family Services.
Is to pay for client materials and client services $5,000.
Madam Clerk, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
It says to pay for client materials and client services $5,000.
Children's Family First Council?
Correct.
Is that probably for vendor services? Let's just hold this next week, we'll get a larger explanation. I know Melissa was changing some things around with the contracts because of funding, and we were recommending that we extend the contracts at the end of the year, and then some of the supplies for some of the programming, but we can get more specific detail on that for easy.
Yeah, I don't think she's been here either, has she, Melissa?
Vacation.
She's on vacation, because it was somebody doing business for her, so...
She had some personal issues she was out for. She's getting ready to go on vacation, but I'll find out the information. None of this is critical.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cordez.
Would you like to amend your motion and second?
To hold that one?
Hold that one?
Yeah, amend and hold.
I'll second the amendment.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions of the County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. I would request an executive session at the conclusion on business today. I want to talk to you about the ongoing labor negotiations, specifically with the United Steelworkers of America this time. I do not have any new potential hires at Golden Acres. You know, I have to announce it that way, because every week it seems like we do, so there's none of those, but I did want to talk about those labor negotiations, which should be brief. So at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, I would ask that we go into executive session and have that talk, and that's allowed under the Sunshine Law. Thank you.
Approving of the reading in the same as the County Commissioners' Meeting Minutes of May 4th?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized payments in the amount of $1,000 each, for each indigent veteran in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5701, Boyer &amp; Co. Funeral Homes, Lorraine, Melvin Rufus Morgan, Lonnie Drew Brown, Daniel Paul Danick, and then Dovin Funeral Home, Lorraine, for Joseph J. Parker.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Advertised for janitorial and cleaning services for various county office buildings. Notice being in the Journal on May 16th and 23rd, pre-bid meeting at 10:00 a.m. on May 26th, Meeting Room E, and open at 2:00 p.m. on June 2nd.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, I have a question. Talking with Brad from the Chronicle last night, he was saying this was a bid, but I thought it was a RFPs, Mr. Cordez.
It is an RFP, it's not a bid. It's a request for proposal only. It is also negotiable and changeable as we go along, so there'll be no sealed bids. It'll be a process whereby, once the materials that we solicit are returned to us, we'll review them, and then we will talk to the vendors from there.
And we have the option of declining also, correct?
Commissioner, you always have the option of declining. It's at the Board's pleasure that we do anything. And even with sealed bids, you maintain the ability not to award. The RFP is a little bit voluminous because of the extent of all the services that we're asking them to take a look at. So I anticipate taking a few weeks to get it back from companies. We'll have to do walkthroughs, they're gonna wanna do some on-sites. So maybe three or four weeks, we should have some information to look at, and then we'll make some decisions from there.
Well, you know, recently, a couple weeks, three weeks ago, I had an email that I saw that was going back between you and Director Dennis Chauver, saying, you know, you had asked for some information and you hadn't received it, and you were kinda disturbed about that. But then, obviously, did he get something that's making us go forward with this? Because I didn't know that we were going this far with it. I thought we were just gathering information. I do have some concerns about confidential information that people will have access to, that currently we've had, you know, a lot of good custodians who we've never had trouble with.
That's true.
That have not, you know, went above and beyond their authority to, you know, dig into people's personal information or things like that. So I do have those concerns, and also, isn't this something that we should have notified the union that we were going to look into something like this?
Seems like you have about 15 questions.
Sorry, well, hopefully you were taking notes while I was asking them.
I'll try to answer them all for you, Commissioner, and they're all very good questions. With regard to my dissatisfaction with the timeframe on the process, that's accurate. I did receive a scope of work from the Maintenance Director thereafter, which I actually shared with the Board. I sent it a follow-up to all the Commissioners that I had received the scope of work. To assist in getting the process rapidly done, because I had been delayed and the Board was, had given me direction in this, I enlisted the assistance of the Purchase Department and the Projects Manager to prepare the rest of the RFP, and put it into proper formats and narratives with the required material submissions, such as bonding and things like that. Once that was completed, normally, I would not have put the RFP on the agenda. RFPs don't really require a resolution to go out, but since this was a tasking from the Board, and I was told by this Board to prepare this some weeks ago, I think it may even been some months ago, I felt it prudent to put it on the agenda to show that, you know, we had completed that first step of that process. Now, the second step is to get it on the website and get it out into the community. Which we expect to the union. I did have a talk with Chris Martinez about two weeks ago, let him know that we were gonna go out and sample the marketplace. I did call him and alert him that it was on the agenda and that the RFP was there. With regard to whether he spoke to people here, that's not my, I have no knowledge of that, and that's not my job. I did speak with the District Representative and give him a bit of a heads-up. And it was about two weeks ago I met with him on other issues that you're aware of.
He may not have forwarded that information on to the union rep, because according to the newspaper, Mr. Blackstone seemed kinda caught off-guard by the whole issue.
Well, we talked about it out here in this room. In late January, early February, it was discussed on whether we should look at outsourcing, and in fact, I believe it was done out here in the public room when Mr. Williams brought it up. You guys agreed to authorize me to prepare this work and take a look at this. So I think it's been around, circulating with regard to the potentiality there. Surprised or not surprised, I also made them aware that this was gonna be looked at at the negotiating table at the end of last year, when we were cleaning up the labor contract. So I don't know that it should be that big of a surprise.
I think it's similar to, like, talking with the Public Defender's Office, if there's any cost savings available, that's what we're looking at.
Well, I think so. What I was told, we just wanna sample the marketplace, and then you can take a look at that, and you can see how it all fits into the mosaic of what we're doing sometime we progress forward. I understand your concerns, though, with regard to sensitivity with certain areas of the county, and we have had some of the custodians quite a while, and we have not had a lot of problems with them. I'll have to agree with you on that, but right now, we're just looking for cost savings.
Sometimes you get what you pay for.
Yep.
I have no comment on that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay. May I say something about that?
Oh, hi Shirley, sorry.
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin, I hope that when you do study this, that you will look at what the long-term costs, as well as the quality of the work is, when you outsource like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Yeah, there's a lot to it. It's more than just dollar figures. You have to take a look at where it's gonna put us and position us in the future. It's not something that we're gonna do lightly. Custodians, I talk to them. When I'm leaving the building and after, good people, we don't wanna put them out of work, but we have to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and that's what this project's about.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Showed family for the amendments to the FY 11 Help Me Grow Contracts, that amendments reflect effective July 1st, 2011 through December 31st, 2011, and all other provisions of Resolution 10448 on June 30th will remain in effect.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Community Development Advertised Notice for First and Second Public Hearing for CDBG Small Cities Program. Notice being in the Journal on May 13th and June 24th. First hearing will be May 23rd at 5:00, and second hearing will be July 13th at 9:45.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under Children's Services Authorized Various Personnel, in Lorraine County Children's Services Department, utilize the agency's Visa Card for the year 2007, NAC 2500 to $20,000, and show oil, gasoline, car, NAC C200.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer Advertised Notice for Replacing the New London Eastern Road Culvert 0108, Rosschester Township. Notice being in the Chronicle on May 13th and 20th, open at 2:00 p.m. on May 26th in the Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Proven enter in participation agreement with ODA for the purchase of sodium chloride rock salt for the 2011-2012 winter season. Estimate is 12,000 tons will be delivered in stockpiled 6,200 at County Garage, 1,700 at Columbia and Grafton Township Garage, and 1,200 at Wellington and Henrietta Township.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cord, you wanna do this?
I wanna ask you a question real quick, back to the janitorial issue. The only cost associated with this is the ad that we're gonna place into the Morning Journal on the two. How much would you say that's gonna cost us to put those ads in? Not much?
Couple hundred?
Couple hundred? So I guess my other question is, if we study this and we find out that people out in the public sector are making more than our people, are we gonna give them a raise? Did you think about that?
I took my directions from this Board.
I don't think I was part of the Board that wanted to do this so much, but...
I think it was a discussion, and Mr. Williams had brought it up as looking at different ways of privatizing and saving costs, and we said go ahead with it.
Yeah, I guess as long as it's not gonna cost us a lot of money, but I do wanna throw that out there, so are you guys going to be willing to give a pay increase to our people if, in fact, the people that we get back are making more than our people?
Well, when you think, when you take in the benefits that you're getting, they're around about $40,000, correct, Jim?
About $45,000.
No, you said 40 in the paper, you keep raising it.
I didn't say 40 in the paper. I think I said 40.
Oh, you said 40? It said 320,000 for eight people. That's 40,000.
And that was me going off my memory from January, but yeah, $40,000 to $45,000 for custodian in the private sector. I don't think that's gonna happen, but we can always talk about...
Well, I won't, you know, fight you guys on wanting to, you know, study this, but I doubt seriously that I'm going to vote in favor of, I mean, unless it's really, really significant, and I don't think it's going to be.
Didn't we have a quote before?
I thought, yeah, Ron Twining looked into this a long time ago, and Ron Twining said it was not going to save us much money, if I remember correctly.
It was looked at a couple years ago. The quotes that Ron received, which was a little bit less formal than what we're doing right now, did not produce enough savings for the Board to want to go out and do that. And that was also discussed here before we did this initiative, and it was still, and Commissioner, I don't wanna say you agreed or disagreed, I can't remember, all I know is I react to a majority of the Board.
I ain't saying that.
So, but I know we had that discussion about those quotes and what Ron did. Unfortunately, Ron isn't not here right now any longer, and...
That's a big unfortunate. We miss him.
So do I, but I know that there was a little bit of potential savings, but it wasn't enough to drive the Board to outsource.
Correct, because we still want the quality of work, so it's worth taking a look at.
Shirley's up again.
Yeah, hi Shirley.
I just wanna remind you that if you hire workers without benefits, that's another kind of cost to the taxpayer, but in a different way.
Shirley, while you're up there, I talked to the Board of Directors at, the Board of Elections, the Director at the Board of Elections yesterday, and he said that he is looking into the issue that you brought up last week about the conditions of, you know, where you could park and things like that when you went to vote, so they're gonna check with the school and look into that issue deeper, so that doesn't happen again.
Well, I appreciate that. I've since discovered that one of the poll workers has sent in 12 complaints, at least at the end of that day, and this morning I just heard the two people fell over there. I have to look into that yet.
That's what Shirley gave me this morning when I walked in, so I said, we're all being addressed.
Just in case you didn't come up in public comment, I wanted you to be aware of that. We looked into that, I looked into that yesterday, so, okay, I'm sorry. Where were we?
We're gonna do the public hearing.
Okay.
Correct. Madam Clerk?
Public Hearing Places Schroeder Ditch Carlisle, New Russia Township, and County Maintenance and Establishment Assessments, consisting of Schroeder Main Ditch and Lateral Number 2, Branch 2, South Schroeder Lateral 2, Schram Lateral. Project consisted of 12,445 feet of ditch, total construction was $197,124, with the maintenance collection of $2,125.86 per year, with 58 parcels being assessed. The ditch has been completed by the County Engineer and Soil and Water, and part of the agreement with property owners was that the ditch would be placed in County Maintenance in accordance with Section 613163 of the Revised Code. First public hearing was held March 23rd, and published in the Chronicle Telegraph on March 8th, with 54 residents being notified. Testimony was given by seven residents. They displayed pictures of flooding and questioned the benefit and assessment process. Commissioners had the Stormwater Advisory Committee review, as well as the Office of Engineer and Soil and Water regarding petition process in airport property. April tough letter was sent to Engineer and Soil and Water from County Prosecutor, addressing Ohio Revised Code 613703 statute that deals with the maintenance assessments shall be apportioned on the basis of estimated benefits for construction of the improvement. He concluded and recommended that the only persons who may be assessed for the maintenance are the original petition signers. April 18th, Engineers submitted a revised drawing showing Schroeder Ditch group maintenance area, and a revised schedule of maintenance assessments related to future maintenance of the improved ditch. The map and schedules were renewed from previous seminal to include only the landowners that signed the group request for water maintenance improvement that was circulated by the Soil and Water District. The revised assessment list includes 24 property owners, with 25 parcels being assessed. The airport is included with multiple parcels benefiting 119.90 acres. April 20th was the second continued hearing, and Commissioners waived the right to notice for the airport, but due to the metro parks being on the original petition but not in the assessment list, a certified letter was sent on April 12th, and the hearing was continued until today.
Good morning. Jerry, can you swear anybody who's wishing to give testimony this morning?
And anyone who thinks they're going to give any comments, please stand and be sworn in. Do each of you affirm or swear that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth, as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I don't see any trustees here from Carlisle or New Russia. Anybody from Soil and Water to comment?
She was unavailable to tell this morning.
Nancy was unavailable? From Engineers' Office, Bill Holtzman or Ken Carney?
No further comment.
Okay. Any residents wishing to comment? Okay.
Commissioner, if I recall, the only reason we continued it was because metro parks hadn't...
Correct, and I have not received any response whatsoever from the metro parks, so...
So Jerry, close the meeting and then vote?
Is the metro parks going to pay their share then, or if they don't respond to appeal it? Okay.
They will be assessed.
What's this? They will or they won't?
Yeah, they're included on the assessment.
Yes? Okay.
Will I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Motion to approve it.
Right, do we need any resolution, though, or just a motion to approve the Schroeder Ditch maintenance?
Uh-huh, and assessments.
Assessments and maintenance.
You got it.
I'll make the motion to for the assessments and maintenance of the Schroeder Ditch.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kaskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Commissioner, there is supposed, in the language of the resolution, we have to find that that's for the public convenience and benefits, and the benefit exceeds the cost, which is three.
So you'll make that work, to make sure it's just normal language?
Yeah. Where are we at? We're going back to, Mr. Cordez, County Administrator.
I have no additional comments this morning, thank you.
Why are you afraid?
I was looking at you, you were looking down this way.
No, I don't have anything that you have, I don't think.
I'll yield to the prosecutor.
We're gonna have to talk from now on. What are you gonna bring up? What are you gonna bring up?
Yeah, I'm gonna yield to the prosecutor while the yielding's good.
Mr. Ennis?
No, I don't have anything for executive session or any report either.
Mistress Report?
Commissioner Williams had brought up the mileage last week, and I got this from Teresa this morning. There's not too many people to be effectuated by changing that. There was one in adult probation for 104, which I don't think will, it was like an unusual circumstance. And then just Betty Blair, who's not, no longer here, Ted Kaylo, 2,400, and Jim Cordez at 240. And the coroner, who's now no longer going to be with us, is 4,200. I did ask Frank DiTillio from the Chamber of Commerce, since I know he has a lot of connections with various private sector employers, and out of five people, all five of those employers in the private sector pay the 51 cents a mile for mileage reimbursement. So unless, you know, Ted, if we could encourage you to maybe use the county car more often, I don't know if you'd be wanting, if you'd be willing to do that, but other than that, I don't see where it's gonna be much of a savings. So I don't know if you wanna comment on that, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, well, I don't think it's gonna be much of a savings for us, again, it's just going back through getting us in line with the private sector, and what I found out is the state auditor, they actually reimburse that 40 cents a mile. That's coming from the state?
The state?
Yeah.
I'm not particular either way. Doesn't matter to me. Still gonna do go where you guys tell me to go, so, unless you guys would like to go there instead.
No, no.
There's plenty of places in the State of Ohio we have to attend, so if you guys would like to make that on your schedule, I will more than cede that to you guys.
You love doing that. The other thing that was interesting, we got an opinion from Dennis Will's office regarding the Public Defender's Commission. According to Dennis Will's office, it said, "I would caution the Board of Commissioners before it formally appoints a commission. The Board of Commissioners may do its own study at this point concerning the feasibility and advisability of forming a Public Defender's Office. It can also form a committee to do this study. It is not my recommendation that the Board of Commissioner goes through the federal statutory procedure of establishing a Public Defender Commission until it is convinced that a Public Defender Office is the appropriate step, or until we have time to clarify the ambiguities discussed above." It says, "I am not sure totally, I am not sure I totally agree with the state Public Defender's analysis that it is as simple as not funding the office. analysis that it is as simple as not funding the office. As the Board of Commissioners is quite aware, it is not unusual to have laws interpreted to find hidden limitations on its discretionary funding." And then I also find it, found it curious this morning that in the newspaper, that the judge and Tim Looby went and sat down with the, I think the Chronicle and the Morning Journal, I don't know if it was both of them. And took their 2012 budget to the newspaper rather than bringing it to the Commissioners. And from my understanding, and I hope somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, if what they're doing when they're saying they're saving a million dollars is they're taking their indigent attorney money from their line item and putting it into the Commissioners' line item. So it's like smoke and mirrors trying to confuse the public, like they're saving money when they're really just taking it from Peter's pocket and putting it into Paul's pocket. Still the same, you know, same pair of pants. So is, can somebody clarify that for me if that's the case? Lisa?
If I could, Lisa, I just want to ask one simple question. Did Lorraine County save $1 million in a general fund? Could you tell, answer that yes or no?
No, those funds have to be, we still have to pay the indigent attorney fees and the professional services. And real quick, just to let you know, I wasn't in the office yesterday. This budget package was submitted yesterday afternoon and I will get it together to give to the Board.
Yeah, all I saw in the letter that we received this morning was that they're gonna show an $84,000 in savings or 3.2% of the budget approved by the Commissioners in 2011 after taking those out.
Their budget. But it's coming back to us to pay?
No, no, there's still another 3.2% of the budget approved by the Commissioners in 2011, our approved budget, not their journal entry, I believe. That's my understanding by the letter.
It's based off of the 2011 budget that they actually received, what they submitted yesterday is approximately $84,000 less.
$84,000 less?
Right.
Right, that's what, that's...
Yeah, I don't know if Ms. Kowski actually seen this one.
I have not seen that.
You got it last.
Here you go.
There you go.
Yeah, well, I don't understand why the Journal gets it before the Commissioners who have to vote on their budgets. Very disturbing to me. Well, I'll have to take a look at this and...
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. I believe that's the end of my report, unless somebody sparks an idea for me to talk about later.
Yeah, going back to the Public Defender's Office, carry what you were saying, Commissioner, yeah, that's been the dialogue back and forth that actually the statute reads that if you do a Public Defender's Commission, they have the ability to hire someone under a four-year contract. But in all the discussions back and forth and multiple emails and my assistant actually spent an hour on the phone with Catherine Smith, who is the Administration Counsel Reimbursement Administrator, she had sent an email a week ago and her interpretation, Jerry, you saw this one, 'cause I went to hand it to you, you said you didn't need it. Although the statute seems to imply the decision to switch to a Public Defender's Office is already made, in practice, the Commissioners may direct the Public Defender Commission to just do a study with a recommendation. Since the County Commissioners have to approve the budget, they can ignore the recommendation by not funding if they disagree. Sorry I missed your call. It seems there are a lot of incorrect assumptions and misinformation floating around based on other calls I have received. So we've got to get deeper into this.
I trust our prosecutor's office before I trust anybody at the state level.
I agree. So that's continued dialogue, I would say.
And I would like to see in writing, without a loophole possible, that if there is a Public Defender's Office formed by this Board of Commissioners at $1.7 million, that we are going to receive at least 35% back from that $1.7 million. Otherwise, it is an increase in cost, not a decrease in cost. And I have not yet heard that. I mean, I heard Judge Walter up here last week saying, you know, there's a, they're supposed to give us 50%, and, you know, it says right here in the statute, and then David Ashenhurst, you know, within a second found the loophole.
Right.
You know, so I'm not sure quite how, you know, far he dug into it when David Ashenhurst, you know, just found it like while he was speaking.
Well, I don't think, I think it was based on that House Bill 153 amendment, which has since been shelved. Have you talked to Representative Booth, Tom?
No, I haven't had a chance to talk to him.
Yeah, he said that, yeah.
It was.
Right, so we don't have the opportunity where it's gonna phase out, for those of you that don't know, that there was a possibility that they were gonna phase out the cost to the counties by 2017, 50%, all the way to 100%. Well, of course, the state decided that's not in their best interest, so let's just keep sticking it to the county.
They'd rather keep their money and give it to us, so, yeah, so we keep following up on it and getting more information.
Well, what we can do is we can contact some of our state senators and ask them to introduce it again.
Correct.
And so it's something that we may want to do as a board, individually, contact them.
Or we can do it all together, actually. It's coming from Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I know the County Commissioner's Association is readdressing it also, because it is one of the major unfunded mandates we're required to pay with no fixed number. They bounce all over the place. Also, I had Solid Waste Policy Committee, Lori's favorite committee.
Two, you still have two-hour marathon meetings?
Yeah, yesterday wasn't too bad, probably an hour and a half.
All right. Brad, Brad loves them too.
Yeah, Brad enjoys them. We had discussions about the issues with the EPA and where we're going with that in regards to the contract with Allied, and I met with our county administrator afterwards. Probably some more dialogue on that and what we're going to do when it comes in regards to dealing with the EPA and what they're asking us to do in regards to that contract.
Well...
Comments?
I guess, you know, I've been getting dusted up pretty good by the Governor's staff and the people at the top end of the Ohio EPA. For some reason, they don't see the same point of view that I'm trying to portray on behalf of the county. I've probably written three or four letters, and the last one was to the Governor's office and the Governor himself with respect to why we did what we did and the positioning we need and the rationale behind it and still to accomplish the outcomes that we thought were permissible within the specific guidelines. The same, I would say, it's a tacit response that I keep getting is, "Well, do it this way before we come club you to death." I'm just kind of summing up three pages of niceties into that. The, it, I'm trying to arrange a meeting right now with the Director of the Ohio EPA to have more of a personalized chat.
Yeah, I'm talking, how about a face-to-face? They seem to dole out all these responsibilities and, you know, this and that, we gotta follow this, you know, order and that order, but they never come down here face-to-face. I'm sure they have plenty of mileage reimbursement, you know, that comes to them. So I think they can take a ride to Lorraine County and tell us face-to-face what their issues are.
I, I don't think that they're gonna come here, but certainly I am more than willing to go to Columbus and...
Make them come here.
Make them.
The other one's being the big boss.
You know, I, I gotta tell you, I really wish I had that kind of jump and influence, but I'm not quite sure that they do, and I don't want to overreach.
You're subpoenaing them.
What's that?
You're subpoenaing them.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. But I am trying to arrange a meeting right now with the Director's Office in Columbus, and I'll keep the Board aware of how that unravels. I do want to have the face-to-face meeting. It is much more difficult to deny somebody, something in person, when you're making that plea. I was hopeful that the, excuse me, the Kasich administration would see that we're trying to follow the lead of simplifying the regulations and unburdening some of those things. That message hasn't apparently been communicated to the Ohio EPA yet, so we're not done with that. But I do have a suggestion with regard to the fees, and Commissioner Kallo, I don't know if you want to go there now or wait on that, but the, I'm afraid that we're not gonna prevail in our position and we're gonna have some potential issues with the payments that we're making on those fees. And I think that we need to stop making those payments and put it into an escrow account until we sort this issue out before we end up with a larger issue that we have to deal with later down the road.
Now, that whole issue lasted and dragged on for months and months. It wasn't like one of those, you know, on the agenda one time and boom, it was made, the decision was made. This was a grueling, you know, long-lasting, yeah, and I would have thought like our, Mr. Greenberg and all those people that, you know, look at the plan and, because the only reason they're saying no is it wasn't part of the plan, correct?
No, what they're saying is we didn't go through, what we did was proper, but we didn't go through the ratification process. The EPA's determination, after we had all this dialogue for a year we spent on that, oh nine, March oh nine to March 10, when we finally approved, and EPA was where we were doing it, because it's going on in other counties, that they are saying we should have sent it back through an entire reratification, the City of Lorraine, the Board of Commissioners, 60% of the political subdivisions.
Will they allow us to do that in retrospect?
They said we can send the plan right back out, but we're getting ready to send our new plan out in two months. I was gonna go over that next in my comments, that we are less than 60 days away from sending our plan out.
It would be hugely time-consuming, confusing at this point. The plan does allow for this. However, the technicality is that the line item in the plan that allows for this had a zero balance in it. And that's because it wasn't anticipated when the plan was originally drafted and we were putting the budget together, that we were gonna need funds to do this. Nobody could read the landscape that well. So it was in the plan, but it wasn't really funded in the plan. So they're standing on a minor, teeny technicality with regard to what they're requiring us to do, which is a reratification of a five-year plan that was four and a half years down the road. And while we were crafting and trying to work with the communities on a new five-year plan, so they're standing pretty firm on this. I'm encouraged that we'll get down to Columbus and make our plea, but I'm not overly optimistic that we're gonna fall onto a pair of ears that's gonna allow this. I think at this point, I need to recommend that, that we hold off on those payments and because there could be the potential, and there's a potential, right now, I don't think it's too strong.
That BFI would have to pay all that money back to us?
Well, they're not gonna go, we have to BFI to pay it back, they're gonna go after the county.
They have to Solid Waste Department to do any findings of recovery, and the concern being that, per the letters currently, if we cancel the contract, we've made everything good and there were no findings and orders coming through. Keith Bailey isn't here this morning, really helped with, you've been following this, Jim.
Let me, let me explain it this way. They're not gonna come back, they'll come back on the Solid Waste Department, but ultimately they'll come back on the county, because the county's a fiscal agent, the county is responsible for those expenditures. If there's a finding for recovery for the million dollars that was paid out, it'll be, it'll be on the county. You have a legal contract with BFI, I don't think you have recourse to go now and tell BFI you want the money back. Their contract is legal with you.
Mr. Ennis, while we've got you here?
What a mess.
I'm not up to date on all these past conversations with EPA.
That's been Greenberg and...
Pay them a lot of money. Make sure these things that we do are legal and accurate.
Well, but they, well, actually, Mr. Ennis did participate at the drafting of this contract.
I know, but...
And it was legal and correct.
Right, but Jerry doesn't have the connections to the EPA like GE or GT or whoever.
And you know, and let me, let me, I guess I gotta state this here, I didn't work on that contract. When, when, when it was, things were turning bad, this got dropped on my desk and said, "Straighten this out." So I'm duking it out with the Ohio EPA, and I wasn't even involved in the drafting of the contract, okay? So I'm trying to pick up the pieces on this and move the county forward.
And basically, Jim, within all rights and intents purposes, what was meant to be done was legal.
Yes.
They're standing on one technicality.
Yes.
And now, I don't know if they've drawn a line, and it's like Jim likes to say, the EPA Director's still looking for the bathrooms.
It's pretty new, and I think they're listening to some folks a little bit further down the food chain.
The bureaucrats, and like Jim says, we've probably gotta have a meeting with the EPA. Well, I would go too, but I would have to have the Board allow me to.
The other thing I want to put out, because people may not be familiar with this area, is why we did this. This was to accomplish two major goals. A, to keep revenue coming into the Solid Waste Department, because we were gonna lose the tipping fees and the tonnage because of the ability of Republic not to compete. And the second thing was to keep jobs here in Lorraine County, lots of jobs, many jobs.
And expansion, added bodies.
So Republic is a major employer here and with major expenditures, not just in...
It was a retention issue.
Exactly. So that was one of the reasons why I wrote to the Governor's Office, saying that this was not simply a solid waste issue, but it was a retention and expansion issue on the economic development, and that we were finding unique ways to assist companies in Lorraine County to continue to provide opportunities for our residents.
But it wasn't so unique, because you said it was, it was an option in the plan.
It just was an option that had a zero balance in the line item.
Right, 'cause nobody could foretell that we would, somebody would come to us and ask us for that.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. David, you have an issue about that?
I, just one little thing, especially if Mr. Cortez wasn't in on, on the thing until it went bad. Twinsburg has the regional EPA office, and they are certainly aware of what goes on in Cuyahoga County as well and what was happening with the landfill in Mansfield or Ashland or wherever it was. And I just, as you're going down to Columbus, I sort of like the idea of them coming up here.
Me too.
But I certainly don't want to leave the Twinsburg people out of it, because they were aware of all this as it was going on, and they did hold the public hearings that seemed to have to be held, and they really didn't. I was in several of the Solid Waste meetings and some of the EPA hearings, and so if you're talking to a new group of people in Columbus, I would suggest also bringing in the permanent people in Twinsburg who've been involved in this, because I, I agree, I think this really was covered.
Actually, it's somebody out of Twinsburg that is, is holding their feet to the fire.
Does it?
Yes.
Is it an attorney by chance?
Well, but...
No?
But they are also the ones who green-lighted it in the first place, it seems to me, or were aware, they were the ones who were getting the...
You know, how does that go? What they knew, when they knew it, and who knew it, those things are right now a mystery to me.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to put those, I'm trying to put those pieces together as...
Sounds like Twinsburg's right in the middle of it all.
There's a new director in Twinsburg too. Skaransky retired, so we've got a new director, Regional Director in Twinsburg now also.
Hi.
Hi. I got a few questions on this issue and not...
Tell us who you are, you have to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick Crewitt, Keppin, Ohio.
Thanks, Rick.
Some are not directly tied into this, but anyway, I'll get to it. You mentioned that several jobs, I was just wondering how many jobs are many jobs?
With regard to Republic?
Yeah.
They have several hundreds of jobs that they provide to...
I think they were 400.
No, that they were gonna reduce.
They didn't give some reduction, but they'd be cutting routes and sending garbage elsewhere, so they would no longer be...
They would've lost the Cleveland contract if we didn't do this.
They lost the Cleveland contract.
They did lose it.
But they got, they got other Cuyahoga County contracts, 'cause we made them more competitive.
How long is that contract? 'Cause I've, I've got an issue with importing garbage into our facilities here, because at some point, this is gonna disappear, and then we're gonna have to go find someplace to take our garbage. So as far as bringing garbage in here, I just assume they find somewhere else to take it, because we're gonna have our own garbage problems.
Well, they're nowhere near their cap there. I think it's 1.1 or 1.3 million tons in the out-of-county garbage, like it's 750,000 tons is what they're proposing, so they're nowhere near the cap.
As far as bringing in?
Yes.
That's what the Toledo contract are going after?
I don't think they're bringing Toledo garbage in.
Toledo garbage coming here?
They will or won't.
Um, okay.
Allied, you know, what are they called now? They're not allied.
Public, Republic.
Republic, I mean, they're a large state.
They still go by BFI too, so I don't know who they are.
Right.
But what, does anybody have any idea what the percentage of import garbage is or...
Actually, those statistics are available, we just don't have them here.
I don't have them in front of me.
We could have Keith Bailey provide them to you.
Step up on the fifth floor on your way out, maybe.
But, but those, those statistics are available.
Okay, is there any idea how long the protected life of this site is?
Yes, the, in fact, they got a, they just got an agreement for the height, to adjust the height. I believe we have at least another 25 to 40 years, depending on how much fill they put in it. We'll have those records upstairs. We really weren't prepared to have much of that discussion on that level, but the data's available, we'd be more than happy to make sure you get it.
Yeah, Rick, just go up to the fifth floor, Solid Waste Policy Committee, Solid Waste Department can get it for you. But I do know, as you're worried about the life of the landfill, since the volume-based pickup has gone in, recycling has increased 48%. Lorraine County was the newest number from 2010. Linda was at the meeting yesterday, where'd she go?
She's here.
Was it 48%, correct?
It was 40.
Yeah, so...
They were looking like 25 was the goal, right? Wasn't 25% the goal?
25% county wide, but we've had a 48% increase from where we were, which is eight or nine percent. So I mean, it's going up there.
Of imported garbage?
No, of recyclables.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If there's more recyclables, Rick, your landfill stays active longer, because you're putting less waste in it.
Plus, people aren't buying as much too, so...
So I mean, it's a flexible number, but it's between 25 and 40 years of current landfill life left, so...
Is there any plan for what we're gonna do at that point?
Ski slopes.
Well, yeah, we're gonna have a new high point there for the state, I think.
Rick, 25 or 40 years from now, if we're still around, you and I, I'm sure they'll be doing garbage all other different ways than they do now.
They'll be sending it up to space or something, I don't know.
Right.
Yeah, I'll be out of it if I am around, so that's for sure. Okay, I guess that pretty much takes care of what I had to ask. Thank you.
Also, under Policy Committee, the community grants will be coming out, they'll be...
They were in the paper.
Oh, they worked.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
They forgets everything before the Commissioners.
They'll be coming out for us to approve next week, so...
Can I, can I back up? I made a recommendation. I, I would like the Board to consider with regard to the fees to Republic. I think generally, it'll show some goodwill on the county's part to at least recognize the EPA's direction.
To put money in an escrow account?
And indicate that while, while we disagree, we fundamentally don't want to be that pugnacious with them, we can release that fund at some future date, but that may help if there is findings for recovery, you know. I'm, I just want to be cautious, it's, whatever the Board decides, I haven't had a chance to talk to counsel on this with respect to our contract with Republic, but there's gonna be some issues here, and I think that if we're, that we need to at least limit our exposure.
I would rather have you get with the legal people from Solid Waste and ask them what's going on with that and what happens when we do suspend and put the escrow. I don't want to react after the fact and end up in litigation with Allied.
Have they been...
Until we have some type of coverage from our legal people, who, Jerry doesn't do the Solid Waste.
Okay.
Have they been in contact with you about this matter?
I've been working with them on-
Allied?
No, I've been working with our consultants and outside legal counsel.
But they're, they understand what, what might be at stake?
I think Allied's response was that's a county problem. And in fact, I think I read that in the newspaper.
Oh, no, really?
Yes. So, you know, they have a contract with the board of commissioners.
I'm going to get a job at the paper so I find out everything.
Well, you got to understand, they have a contract with you, so they're, they're, you know, they're perfectly fine with that. They're, they're, it's, it's, it's the board of commissioners that right now has the exposure and all the risk. Uh, I can certainly communicate with them, Commissioner, with regard to that. But again, I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that, that, you know, we have some liability. I will report back next week what I find and I will also continue to try to push the issue to get down to Columbus and have that meeting.
I would be in favor of putting it in an escrow account until such time as this is resolved.
Well-
I don't have a problem with that either actually, but I would rather talk to legal this week and hold till next week, that's not going to change anything with EPA.
Well, when do we normally submit that?
We're submitting it monthly, so I-
When's it due? When do we normally, I would, before it goes, yeah, the next payment is up, we better have an answer or put it into escrow.
Okay.
Okay?
Agreed, yeah, I just, we brought it up for dialogue, because I met with Jim after the policy committee meeting and let know what was going on and to get some more dialogue with he done with EPA in the past week, so that's why we brought it up out here.
Okay.
That's the end of my report.
That was a good report, Commissioner.
Didn't tell you about the ditch I had to go look at the other day, there on a residence complaint I turned over to Bill Holtzman.
Everybody else jumped in on your report.
That's okay.
Did you get muddy? Did you get muddy?
No, I didn't walk it, I, I looked and that was enough, so.
Now, I just wanted to bring something up, I was going through, looking at some stuff on the, on Senate Bill Four. I don't know if you're familiar with this, it's a program that the governor approved, putting 1.5 million dollars in a lead program. Uh, basically for the state auditor to come in and do a performance audit. And I'm not asking you to agree to a performance audit right now, but I would like to try to get ahold of the auditor's department and have them come in and do a presentation possibly for next week. If it's something that we want to go through, we would have to submit paperwork by May 31st by four o'clock. From what I'm told is they upfront the money and if they feel that they can go through and save us money, they will come in and do a performance audit and then we would have to pay it back with the cost savings for next year.
So there ultimately won't be any money out of pocket because they can guarantee that they can save us money, kind of like what we did with our utilities?
Right, yeah, that's what they're saying, that's why I would like to have them come in and we can question them about it.
Senate Bill Four is already approved?
Senate Bill Four is approved.
I would be in favor of that, any-
Our re- uh, regional liaison is Michelle Stites. She was in Akron with me last week, so she was the one that brought the, I gave you guys copies of-
The only caution on this is that if they recommend things that you disagree with and you don't do them, you pay anyway. And there wouldn't be any savings.
But what, do we have like a not to exceed out of pocket amount?
Well, we'd have to look at it, but it was the same, you brought up the-
It's not going to hurt for them to give us a presentation.
You brought, no, not at all, you brought up the energy conservation issue. The issue is if you don't do those things, just you're liable for the bill. If the bill is, let's use an absurd number, a hundred thousand dollars, and they find, they recommend these areas where you can save money, but you decide that for, for various managerial reasons, you don't want to head in that direction, you still owe them the cost of doing the audit. Whether you, because you have to implement to save the money to pay back the audit, so you still have responsibility for that.
And Tom, do they look at every aspect of county government with this audit?
They can, yes, now it would be up to the elected officials, so if we're going to have them come in and do a presentation, I think we should invite all elected officials to come in and then they can decide if they want to have.
But what if an elected official opts out of it, then they, we don't have to force it on them?
Well, I don't believe we can force it on an elected official, um, but hopefully through the presentation, they're going to see it. The voters will see what we're doing and, um, you know, if they opt out of it, they opt out of it. So, if you're okay, I would like to contact them and see if they could come in.
Sure.
And you brought up, um, Michelle Stite. Teresa, you were at a conference and I was told that you were the hit of the conference, you did a great job presenting there and that the group loves having you and that you're actually trying to bring them here to Lorain County, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
At the train station.
At the train, right.
Pardon me, that's Transportation and Community Center.
Yeah, yes.
The Betty Blair Transportation and Community Center.
I think right now we call it the Community Center.
The Community Center, yeah, we don't have too much transportation going on.
Yeah, I've been working with the AG's office and Secretary of State and finally Michelle and me. Well, as of last Thursday, I couldn't get it here, then Friday we were in Columbus and she goes, I think we got you there.
Did you get my response that I would be in favor of that?
Yes, yes, so.
Yeah, I would like to attend that as well, but just wanted to let you know, you got a lot of people who respect you down there, so.
You got a good girl over here.
Yeah, hi, Rick Crewitt, Kipton. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but this performance audit basically boils down to inefficiency, expert coming in and looking at controlled parameters and that ends up being basically services and, and jobs, doesn't it? Uh, we're looking at basically reducing services and jobs with their recommendations and is the, are the commissioners ready to do that? Because if they bring them in and that's what they recommend and you don't want to get rid of these services and jobs, we're going to be stuck with the bill.
Well, Rick, I think that's why we need the public here, if we're going to hold this meeting next week, to ask those questions.
Uh, well, I-
Because they'll be here to answer them.
Well, okay.
I think those are the, I mean, the questions we would bring up as commissioners, but the public's more than welcome to chime in also. So I mean, I think those would be discussion points.
Well, can I, do you have an answer for that now as far as, or how do you feel about reducing jobs and services at this point?
We already have.
Yeah, I don't-
All right, that's what I mean, we cut it to the bone.
Right, I don't quite know what services are still out there to cut, I know there's non-mandated services, but are they good to cut?
And don't make Don Romantic swallow his tongue again this week.
Are they good to cut just for cost savings and lose the benefit of performing the service? I mean, those are issues that we have to deal with, so I mean, that's why if they do the presentation, we're not committing to the performance audit.
No, we could probably look at that ourselves without bringing in experts to look at this and cost us a bunch of money because we can't do what they want.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why if they give us a, if they give us a presentation on what it all encompasses, again, similar to public defender's office, they're giving us all this ability to possibly save money, but as you read through the code and all the rules and regs, it sort of gets out of hand and not quite, it's contrary to what they've given you as information. So I mean, that's why we have legal also-
Glad we didn't do a knee jerk reaction on that one, say, oh yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, that's why we ask the questions and talk.
So they will be here to answer questions then next week, right?
Well, I'm going to put the request in and we would need to know by the 31st if we're going to go with the performance audit. So I will reach out to the state auditor's office and see if their schedule's available for next Wednesday. Okay, Mr. Cortez, if, um, if I get fee, uh, confirmation of that, can you put that on our website that the auditor would be in?
Certainly, absolutely, positively.
All right, and I'm going to ask my friends at the newspapers if you could just take a look at that and also remind the public on that. Now that we're talking about it, would that be something, maybe we want to have our commissioners meeting at a later time for next Wednesday if we have her coming in, uh, so we can get more of the working, uh, the taxpayers here. I mean, 70% of the people are working at this time. Would you be okay with moving a meeting till four or five o'clock or 5:30 so we could possibly get more individuals here?
I think your concern is going to be getting all the elected officials here and their staff.
Yeah, we might have overtime issues and things like that.
Or just, yeah, exactly, having to do the work.
Maybe, maybe have a second one if you want?
Okay, I can, I'll find out.
Or webcast it, because then they can see it anytime they want.
Yeah.
If it's plugged to our thing, we've got the webcasting capability.
Okay.
We can do it from here, normal time.
Tape it and put it on the web?
And then put it on the web.
Well, we got the cameras, so we could do like a webinar.
Yeah, right, so I mean, we can do that, so the public's always got the ability to look at it.
Okay.
It, it's just staging times for all the employees, you're talking about support staff, even though the elected official would be here, they still need their support staff who would actually be part of the implementation or working with the auditor's office on a performance audit. So they would need to attend also, so looking to move all that staff into late evening could be logistically difficult.
All right, that's going to be the end of my report.
Board of Correspondents.
Board of Correspondents.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kaski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
We still have public comment, anybody wishing to address the board, come on up.
Who hasn't so far?
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I, she's called me, you called me a couple of times this last week and I have not had an opportunity to call you back, I apologize. I, I kind of took it, as probably you heard about what I brought up in the meeting last week.
We did.
And, um, what I had found out and I, and correct me if I was wrong last week, but they told me that the TB clinic would, anybody that has a hundred thousand dollar house and property taxes, it would cost them about three dollars a year to run the TB clinic. Is that about right, would you say?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, all right.
So due to the recent comments about the TB clinic and its levy, I would like to address the commissioners and those present here today. TB is not for the poor, not for the homeless, the ill or the elderly. It's not just for those born in other countries, it's airborne and as long as we're alive and breathing, we can become infected. Effective medical therapy has existed for more than a half a century, yet TB continues to be among the most pressing public health issue of our day. Decreased number of cases in recent years is not only in Lorain County, it is in Cuyahoga County and all 88 counties within Ohio. But this in Lorain County proves that we are doing a good job of prevention and treatment. When you hear the number of cases, it is not just that amount of patients that we see. We actually see approximately a thousand patients a month. We should be proud that our county has a TB program. In this day of skyrocketing unemployment, loss of health benefits and declining economy, now is not the time to change or get rid of a free medical clinic that provides free services to its residents and no cost to the county. History will repeat itself if this levy is eliminated. TB will be on the rise as what happened in the 1980s. As cases declined, the money was pulled back and the case number rose again. If we forgot about that, what happened in the 80s, please let us not be reminded by ourselves or a loved one developing TB, becoming seriously ill and possibly dying and spreading it to others that we love. The TB clinic, I feel, is, and, and I, it's not just my personal feelings, it is proven that it is best for the taxpayers and best for the commissioners the way we're structured as it is today, since it started in 1968 when the TB sanatorium was closed. And there are several Ohio revised codes that state that the county commissioners are ultimately responsible for tuberculosis. So having this levy at this three dollar per hundred thousand dollar property value means no dollars come from the commissioners' general fund. Free tuberculosis screening is provided, prevention is provided and treatment is provided to all Lorain County residents. And we also provide services for non-county residents at a nominal fee. Most, um, let me go on to what we provide, free screening. This, residents who are looking to go back to school, looking for new employment, they need to be screened. Many can't afford to go to their family doctor. The other issue is family doctors do not supply the testing solution because it is so costly and it does have an expiration date. So most physicians do not even have the ability to provide these services, nor does their staff have the expertise to provide these services. We also provide free prevention therapy, free medication on a monthly basis, which includes free blood work, nurse monitoring, monitoring for side effects. When this is turned over to a physician's office, patients receive a prescription, they go to their drugstore. Many can't afford to purchase it, so they are non-compliant. But you cannot see, go back to your doctor every month for follow-up for side effects. At the TB clinic you do, we're a walk-in clinic, you just come in and a nurse monitors you. We do free TB treatment. That, of course, is what is part of the commissioner's responsibility to support TB treatment. Now, however, it would be structured, whether through a county hospital, the way it is in Cuyahoga County, through the TB clinic program as it has been since 1968, or through a health department. And I will get into that, when it is structured through a health department, it does not work the way our TB clinic works in this county. It's different, the money's not there, the staff is not there and the expertise is not there. One TB case here in this county entailed screening more than 2,000 people. When I say 2,000 people, it's 2,000 people two times at the onset. We place a skin test, we come back two or three days later to read it. So those 2,000 were tested at two nurse visits. Then 10 to 12 weeks later, we go back and we test that 2,000 again. So that means 2,000 people four times. This takes a lot of manpower. The TB clinic has seven employees. We have cut back in recent years. Our pharmacist is no longer there, our physician has taken over the pharmacist duties, two clerical people are no longer there. So we work at a minimal. We all share duties and we cover each other and I think that we are doing a good job. The, the expertise in TB lies in Cuyahoga County and in Lorain County. Having this, the TB clinic means we can work full-time and we do a lot of prevention. We provide free TB skin testing surveys. If we were merged with a health department, these services would stop. We can provide free surveys, we do this all the time. We go out to many facilities, which I have listed in your paperwork. Our nurse goes to the facility to test, she goes back two days later to read. This saves time, gas and it fulfills the facility's, excuse me, mandated requirement. And it also is an ease, it provides a convenience for the physically and mentally challenged, the elderly and students. We provide free community in services, education which is customized to that facility's needs. Staff education at local hospitals, the hospitals have called me and asked me to come in and teach them and educate them how to provide a skin test correctly, because their employee health nurse needs to test on weekends to staff who maybe only works weekends, staff who works night shift at hours when the TB clinic is closed. So we actually provide education to our local hospitals, to fire departments, nursing homes and some of these educational in services are required by state law. Many physician's offices call us and ask us for consultation on how to read a skin test. They're not sure of the result, is it negative, is it positive? They send the patient to our office. Where will this expertise go if this levy is not allowed to be renewed? We do follow-up on CDC referrals for residents exposed on airline flights and we're starting to see this more and more lately. We receive information from the Ohio Department of Health informing us of which county resident was on a certain flight where there was a ca- an active case diagnosed of a contagious patient. We locate that patient, we ask them to come into the clinic, we educate them as to what this means by this, by this exposure that they had on a, on a airline flight, whether it be a pleasure or a business trip. We perform a two-step skin, skin test on them, which is equal to four visits and we report this outcome to the Ohio Department of Health, who in turn reports it to CDC. We also receive referrals from immigration, from Homeland Security through the Ohio Department of Health. They notify us when a new Lorain County resident moves into this area that needs to be tested. This person either had an abnormal X-ray prior to entry or they had a very abnormal X-ray, were treated in the foreign country, but still need to follow-up with us to make sure that their X-ray is now safe, that their X-ray is normal and that they are safe to be residing in our community. So we locate that new immigrant, we ask them to come to the clinic, we do a repeat X-ray, we do an evaluation and if they have not completed treatment, we provide free treatment and we take care of that. One huge money saver for the commissioners that I'd like to remind you about is the TB testing that we do, the chest X-rays, the medication, the monitoring, the lab work, the collection of sputums in a negative air pressure room that is located in the tuberculosis clinic. UV lights are situated throughout the clinic, which kill the TB bacteria. So we, we do these, these annual services and sometimes more often than annual to the juvenile detention home. So what I'm listing here are agencies that are directly under the commissioners. If we were not there to provide the free services for them, they would have to add the, the amount of the cost of those services to their budget, which in turn comes from you. That would be the juvenile detention home, we go out there every week. Every Tuesday morning at 9:30, one of our nurses goes to the juvenile detention home and tests every new, um, student, every new youngster that comes into the detention home. If they have a positive skin test, we provide the medication and we do the X-ray at the TB clinic. Golden Acres, residents and staff, their annual skin test, which is required by law. If a resident or an employee has a positive skin test, we provide nine months of free- If a resident or an employee has a positive skin test, we provide nine months of free medication. TB cases can be treated for either six months, nine months, or one year, depending on the severity of their tuberculosis. We go, Lorain County Correctional Facility, LCCF, the prisoners come to us for x-rays. So if a prisoner, just a quick example, has a positive tuberculosis skin test, every time that he is incarcerated at LCCF, he has to come to the TB clinic to get an x-ray before he's allowed to stay there at the facility, at the correctional facility, to make sure that he's not contagious. The chest x-ray determines the difference between infection and disease. So this inmate can be released, come back again a few weeks later, a month later. We see them, they are frequent flyers. It's a revolving door where they need to come back and get an x-ray, because they cannot be skin tested, they need to get an x-ray. So they come to, the sheriff's department actually escorts them over to the TB clinic, they get an x-ray. Our physician reviews that x-ray and a report is sent back to LCCF. Lorain County Adult Probation and the coroner's office, we provide annual skin testing, x-rays, and medication for them. The Adult Parole Authority, recently, recently I gave four in services, two in one day and then two the next day for probation officers. It was a required, it was a requirement for them. They needed an in-service on an infectious disease. Children's Services, we provide annual skin tests. Our nurse comes here to Children's Services at a date that's set up, and we provide free skin testing to them. So if we were not here providing those free services, they would have, they would either have to purchase the solution, they would have to try to find a doctor who has the solution and would do the testing. But again, that means more money from, coming from the commissioners. I've provided a list of additional agencies that we go out, local high schools, daycare centers, group homes, nursing homes. However, let me get into, so that's the TB clinic as it stands today. And since its inception in 1968, the clinic has never needed to come to the commissioners for money. We've always stayed within our budget. One main goal for staying within our budget is because one case of drug-resistant tuberculosis could clean out our budget. So we always have to make sure that we have money left over. In this pamphlet that I provided-
How much money do you normally try to keep left over?
As much as we can. A lot of our furniture, I mean, if you come to the clinic and visit, we are very frugal. A lot of the furniture came from-
You have a lot of statistics here, but what's the annual revenue from the levy? And what are your annual expenses? And what are your carryover right now?
We're carrying over, a little over a million.
That's what kind of caught my eye when I saw your minutes, you know, a few months ago, and I thought, well, boy, they've got a lot of money there sitting. We're looking at every department to see if we can do things differently, better, cheaper. You know, we don't want to make, you know, reduce the amount of service, but maybe we can find a new way of doing things like we are with the sheriff's dispatch. And we thought, well, maybe if we did like a voucher program or something with the health department in cooperation with the TB clinic-
Sure.
-to still provide service. You know, we don't want people to all, you know, start, you know, getting the virus or the tuberculosis.
Do you know what your, the annual revenue from the levy is?
Originally, when we were up in 2007, we went for a replacement with a reduction, and it was to bring in 700,000. I believe now we're, realistically with foreclosures, we're looking more at 600,000.
With the-
In that, approximately.
But eventually those taxes will be, those levies will be paid. They're just in suspension right now because if they're foreclosed and the property is sold, the taxes have to be cleaned and that eventually will be collected. So you're collecting about 700,000 a year for these, you know, you call them free services, but there, there's $700,000 a year being collected to pay for those services.
Well, we have, we're paying for medication. One, just one order of medication runs us between $4,000 and $6,000 to provide the free medication for the county residents.
Is it only for people that can't afford it, or?
It's for everyone, all Lorain County-
But what if there's people that can afford to pay for it?
If you have healthcare that covers prescriptions-
We do not collect, we do not-
But maybe we should. If there's people that, I mean, I could see low-income, you know, they can't afford the medication, but if they have insurance and they can afford to pay, or they want, you know, maybe we're collecting too much. And like I said last week, $3 a year is not a lot of money.
That's $3 per $100,000.
Per $100,000. I mean, it's not, even if it was a $200,000 house, that's $6 a year. It's not a lot of money. But when I saw a million-dollar carryover, you know, when the county strapped and we're trying to, you know, cut everywhere, that's what caught my eye, and that's why I brought it up last week.
But I guess-
Maybe there's new ways, better ways, cheaper ways of doing the same-
And there could be, and I'm not saying that there's not. However, I do ask that, that serious discussion take place on all sides-
Absolutely.
-before any decision is made.
We weren't making a decision. I brought it up for discussion.
No, I under-
I thought, well, maybe if it's, you know, a lot of money, and if we decide to pass a sales tax, which that's the only thing that got brought up in the paper, is that I brought up a sales tax increase. It was to see if maybe one would wash out the other, but then I realized it was only $3.
Right.
It's not gonna-
And I think if the TB clinic levy is not there, it doesn't mean that people are going to vote for the sales tax.
Right. I was just trying to wash one against the other.
And we're being urged on a government level to-
Consolidate services.
-share services, less cost to the residents. So Commissioner Kukowski brought up, is very pertinent to what we're trying to do. And I understand you defending the TB clinic, but there might be better ways of, I mean, even in the few minutes I read through the revised code, there's a possibility to be regional, multiple counties. I mean-
And the state's working on that right now.
Correct, the shared services.
There, yes.
And I think that's our discussion points up here-
Yes.
-to saving dollars for the residents, still perform as much of the service as we possibly can while cutting their tax bill.
This is, this is on, the board put this on my list of things to do. I haven't even had the discussions with the health department yet. It's on a long list. It's right in line with Commissioner Williams asking me about children's services and job and family services, and the public defender, and selling property. There's a long list of things that need to be reviewed for whether business as usual, or is there some transitional change that we need to make that will provide either a similar or possibly a better service and a, and a new delivery system?
Believe me, we're not, I wasn't picking on your department.
We didn't take it that way. You know how, we, I felt that, that there needed to be an education as far as what we do. I mean, believe me, we've heard it all. I mean, and we know that having a case count of three cases last year, it sounds like, well, what are these people doing? They've had three cases, what are they doing in between? We are busy full-time.
But I think we should be subjugating some of these claims for cost back to insurance carriers.
Well, that's what I'm looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get back to that. Let me, can I address that?
Sure, sure.
Insurance doesn't pay for a majority of it-
They don't pay for it.
...because it's not for prevention, because the INH for prevention is, it's considered prevention, and insurance companies don't pay. I worked at Metro for 20 years, and I worked in their TB clinic. They work a little differently than we do. They're not levy-funded. They received funds from the state and from federal funds.
Do we get state money and federal money?
No, no, no. But, but that's all dwindling. That is dwind-
But why haven't we been receiving?
They're chosen by county hospitals.
Because we had a levy and we've, we just always have the levy.
So we save the state and federal money by having our residents pay for it? No?
Say that again?
We save the state and federal money by having our local residents pay for-
We do, and the local residents don't seem to mind because-
No, I'm not saying because if they realize it's only $3 or not-
Because they appreciate the services, and many times the services that we can provide free enable them to move on and take a class or get a job that they would not have been able to do if they were, if they had to pay. So what I do want to tell you about is, yes, I am very well aware that of the 88 counties, just Cuyahoga and Lorain County have a tuberculosis clinic. However, TB is not managed the same when you lump it all one into the health department.
But I guess the question to you, and in a non-conflicting, adversarial way here is, what makes 86 counties wrong and two right?
Do they have outbreaks of TB in those other 86 counties?
Not as many as we do. Some months we see 2,000, some months we see 700 patients.
If you're seeing that many, and you're only, your budget's 700,000 a year, $55 or so per person? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to figure, the numbers in my head aren't making sense.
How did you come to $55 a person?
Well, you're saying that your levy is $700,000, right? So if you get 700,000, you're seeing 12,000 people. I mean, I don't have a calculator.
That's right. You're right. 55 is about approximate.
So about $55 per person is what you would see for every person that comes in. I don't see how you got a million-dollar carryover then. It seems like your numbers may be inflated. I'm not saying that it is, but mathematically, it's not making sense to me.
And the other thing, when I did look at the minutes, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, a month before, it had shown like about $10,000, $12,000 of expenses for that meeting, and it was like furniture and fixtures and things like that. And I thought, well, it looks like they're trying to get that over, carryover down a bit by, by making a lot of purchases. Did you redo an office or something?
No, we didn't, no, we did nothing. 10, 12-
I think it was about $10,000, 7 to 10?
No.
No?
No, not, could it have been a health?
It's just that some of these services-
No, we didn't do anything.
I know healthcare insurance companies do not pay for employment-related issues. So if you need a TB screening for employment, your health insurance won't cover that. But that's a cost to the employer.
Usually the employer picks up.
Right. That's a cost to the employer, and it seems like we're doing that for free in Lorain County. The nursing homes, you brought up Golden Acres, but we're, we're a very small nursing home. Are we providing free TB to all of these nursing homes out here? But they're for profit businesses.
Right. Did, do you do Community Health Partners or Mercy Hospital?
No, we've done in services there. They do their own skin testing, but if at the time of reading, two days later, they're not sure of the result, then they send that employee over to us.
That happened to me before, because I worked at Community. I had to get a TB test every year because I worked in the emergency room-
Right.
-and I'm, you know, exposed to a lot of disease.
But again, we're, you know, the, these services to private nursing homes and private businesses, it's all an employment-related cost.
Right.
I mean, saving residents $3 a year on a $100,000 house doesn't seem like a lot, but it's still, I mean, we need to prove that everything that we're doing is, is a true benefit to the county.
Well, I'm not looking at $3 per resident or $100,000. I'm looking at $700,000. And I'm looking at a year and a half's worth of carryover in the bank. The, that's a lot of carryover based upon the expenditures from the organization.
One TB case can cost over $200,000. Here's, here's another reason why we always, drug-resistant, they have to go to another drug. They receive four drugs for TB. A normal TB case receives four drugs. Two of the four drugs are weight-based, and they're very expensive. Many pharmacies don't even dispense them. One of the counties in-
What do they do in other counties? Those are what we're asking. We still haven't got-
They go to the commissioners for money. So this is-
Who does?
Who does? The health department that is responsible for the TB control. They have one nurse, they usually have one nurse, and that's it for TB control. She has duties. She works on other infectious disease, or she has other duties assigned to her by her boss. And when a case of TB is diagnosed, she puts that aside, manages the case of TB, but she cannot see that patient Monday through Friday the way our clinic does to make sure that the patient swallows their meds. There is an administrative Ohio code that says how we are to manage TB. A nurse needs to see a TB case Monday through Friday and watch them swallow their pills, and that's what we do right now. We either go to your house or your job, and your job is only when you're not contagious, when you're deemed safe to go back to work. So if you got TB and you were ill and you were isolated at home, I or one of the other nurses, because I would fill in for her if she's ill or on vacation, come to your house Monday through Friday.
The question I have is-
Sure.
-in other counties, do they provide free, in your words, free screening to private businesses? Do they go out and provide these services in the community to all of these businesses? They don't do that.
They don't provide it free to their residents.
I understand that.
When, when they're non, okay, we provide free for nonprofit. If a company called, several doctor's offices ask us to come and skin test their staff. They may have six employees in the office, nurses, whatever, but they don't want their staff leaving work, coming to the clinic. They want the convenience. We charge them $5 a skin test. So those are the revenues that we have.
Yeah, but you send somebody out on the road to do, $5, you go to, you do four of them, that's $20.
$20, right.
Believe me, you didn't recover your costs of sending somebody to that doctor's office.
Private sector businesses who are receiving a free test, if they send it off for health test or-
We could cha, we could charge them more.
Then you'd need less of a levy then.
Pardon me?
Then you would need less of a levy, less taxes on the residents, if you're generating more revenue.
We could charge them more. We do cha, out-of-county residents who come to see us, we charge them $5 for a skin test.
Why would somebody come from out of county? Why would we allow that?
They do all the time.
Why would we allow that?
Because it's cheap and it's free.
Right, but we shouldn't allow that.
We don't, we don't, no, no, no.
If our county residents are paying for it, then they should-
We charge them.
They shouldn't be allowed to come to our county.
Do you really think that $5 recovers your cost?
Pardon? Yes, it does. We checked it out.
Hold on. I want to challenge you on that. $5.
For a skin test?
And how long are you gone?
Pardon me?
How long are you gone on a visit?
This is when someone comes in to-
When you go to their office, how long are you gone? How long does the visit take to do the four or five people?
Four or five?
You're saying that you're going to a doctor's office and you're charging, you know, $5 a skin test and that, right?
For, to do five people, it could take 15 minutes.
Takes 15 minutes, your travel time, everything else.
No, not travel time. Not travel, not travel time, but being in the office, about 15 minutes. It doesn't take long to give a skin test.
Okay. Do you, when you went through, did you look at your overhead? Did you look at all of the expenditures on, I'm sorry, but I don't believe $15 or $5 per skin test is going to cover it.
No.
I mean, I-
There's a reason why that doctor didn't want his employee to be left. It's, you know-
Cost him too much money.
Cost him too much money.
Right. I mean, even at the $500 rate you're doing it, I mean, yeah, I'm gonna-
You better talk to your boss at Indicare and see if he wants to have somebody come out and do that, what a deal.
You have portal-to-portal time with the employee cost and overhead. You have travel cost. If you're even leaving the TB clinic to go up to Lorain, you're going to have a 20-minute each-way travel time. And if you have 20 minutes, that's, that's at least an hour, and I guarantee your employees make, with all full absorption costs and benefits, make more than $15 or $20 an hour.
With all due respect, we probably only test at two physician's offices in the county. There are two physicians who have used our services. Mainly, we go to large groups and facilities. We test at Murray Ridge, at the administration building, at the workshop in Alaria, Lorain, and Oberlin.
I, you know, I worked at the same facility in Lake County, and I was the HR laborations director, and we paid for those tests. We didn't get them provided by somebody for free. When we had our employees done, we paid for those services.
In Cuyahoga County, when I worked in the TB clinic there, they did collect insurance information, and there were patients who would deny having insurance because they didn't want to submit that information and then have to pay-
The co-pay.
The co-pay, or their, because, or they knew it would be-
They let them pay the whole thing back.
Or they knew it would be their deductible, but even when, but then you need staff to submit this to insurance companies. So we would need an employee to submit bills to insurance companies to do this billing, which we don't have right now. When, and, and we do have out-of-county, I didn't get a chance to answer that. The out-of-county folks who come, we see people from Westlake, Rocky River, the west side of Cuyahoga County who come to us because it's closer. The only other place that they could get a skin test for free would be the Cuyahoga County TB clinic, and you need an appointment there. It is at the hospital, they have to pay for parking, and it's a longer drive for them. So many-
And how much do they pay into the levy in Lorain County?
Right. Excuse me. Every time you answer a question and give those examples, you're making the levy look less and less needed. Lorain County residents supporting Rocky River, Westlake, out-of-county-
We're not supporting them. They pay. They pay. And then that money goes back, goes into our fund.
You know, I could tell, you're, you really believe in the job you're doing, and I don't want you to feel that we're trying to pick-
and I don't want you to feel that we're trying to pick on you or anything. What I would like to do, and hopefully other commissioners would agree, could we get you, could you get your budget together and actually get numbers? That way, we're not really talking about emotions on it, but we could sit down and we could talk about where your spending, expenditures are and things of that sort. Would you be willing to do that?
Absolutely.
If you can send that over, then, then we'll probably do more of the discussion after.
Sure, absolutely.
To do it here without that information, we're budgetary.
Yeah.
And without the budget numbers, we, right now, it's just opinions based on your belief in your system, and then our concerns and questions we have without any hard numbers. And that's what we're charged to do as elected officials.
Oh, I totally understand. As a nurse, my viewpoint is caring for the patient and doing the best for them. And it doesn't just entail the patient, it entails their entire family, and then it spreads out into their workplace. We've tested at several companies here because of active TB, active TB cases within employment at these companies, and it's devastating. It's devastating to them. So, and I do have to say, we see this all the time, that until tuberculosis hits your family or one of your friends, you don't under, no one seems to understand, at that, at that point is when you do understand the realm of the effect on your life and your family's and friends' life, and how it all trickles down and spreads out. But one TB case, there was one county who had a homeless person who had tuberculosis. That, that county TB was run through the health department, and so, and the commissioners funded tuberculosis, they had to rent a trailer, park it on the sheriff's department property, and it cost them well over 200,000 dollars. Medina County right now has one active case of multi-drug resistant TB, and Cuyahoga County is managing it. They called us to manage it, and I informed them, I can help you. They had questions, they needed information, they didn't know what to do. I said, I can talk to you on the phone, I can help you, guide you through what to do with this patient, but I cannot provide medication or treat your patient that lives in Medina County. Because Cuyahoga County is not levy-funded, Cuyahoga County is managing a Medina County case because Medina County does not have a tuberculosis clinic, their funding is through the health department directly from the commissioners, and the monies were not available quickly enough to start treatment. That's another issue, and like I said, and this is a medical issue. When a case of TB is diagnosed, you have to start treatment today, not tomorrow, not two days from now, not next week. We can't come and say to the commissioners, we need funds, we just have another case of TB, and then wait for approval, go purchase some meds, and then start treatment. In the meantime, many more patients, many more people can be affected by medication and treatment not being started immediately. If I have, if I, right now, got a phone call, I could go back to my clinic, pack up the meds, and start treating that patient within an hour.
And I think we all appreciate the good time you're spending.
No, I was just wondering, when you said that the Cuyahoga County called you to see if you would do it.
Medina County called, Medina County.
Because they don't get the revenue on it. I know, just from the corner, when he came in and talked, that Cuyahoga County pretty much really takes it to us with the fees. Could we charge them and actually make revenue off of them?
For autopsies, they get us, hit us hard with autopsy.
Right, so I'm just wondering, with a TB case in a different county, could we actually charge them more, if it was going to be 200,000 dollars for the cost, could we charge it 250?
I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I don't have the answer to that because we've been, since 1968, we've been the way we are now. And I do understand that things have to, that things need to change, and that we have to watch money, but when TB, and, and to answer your question about, well, all of the other 86 counties, are they all doing it wrong? No, I won't stand here and say that they're doing it wrong, but they're doing it different, and it's not better.
Well, the only issue is, the commissioners can't take the burden of the expense of taking care of the TB patients.
Correct.
So we, if we eliminated the levy altogether, then we would have some issues, but it may be a matter of a reduction.
Let me see if I can refocus us here, and, and I think we should conclude this conversation when we get to data.
Yeah.
I thought that's what was going to happen after the commissioner said that.
For the data, I would like your year-to-date revenue and where those revenues come from, and your year-to-date expenses.
Right.
And what those expenses went to.
The, the, the genesis of the dialogue out here, which was, put in the newspaper a little bit about our discussion, was to just look at the delivery method of services, to see if there was any beneficial reason for consolidation. And I'll say it, the TB clinic wasn't targeted. This, this is several agencies that the board is looking at, because there is a big push to, to consolidate for more effective delivery of services. So it's not that they don't recognize the severity of the problem, nor our concern for the health of the residents. They're looking at the delivery method of those services, not to do away with those services.
Correct. Is a better, cheaper way of providing the same service to our residents.
And I always like the word "less expensive" or "lowest-cost" method, rather than cheaper.
Cheap sounds so cheap.
The, so, please, don't understand, while, while the conversation's a little tense, it's not, it's not personal.
No, you know what, excuse, and I apologize, I, I'm very passionate.
You're passionate.
I am, I am very passionate about what we do.
And that's a good thing, we need passion.
I've seen, I've seen the way it works in Cuyahoga, with them getting funding from state, federal, and insurance, okay? And it doesn't always work there.
But in, in this environment we find ourselves in, it's going to be the transformational leaders and the innovators that survive and move forward. And so I like, I kind of like something you said, you said, well, we've been doing this this way since 1968. Well, you know, that's, that's 43 years or 45 years of delivering...
I don't do the same things as I was when I was three years old, so now I'm telling you how old I am.
So it may be, it's just maybe time for, for a deeper look of how we deliver services in the community.
But if it works, why change it?
Well, if you find cost savings a better way of delivering the service at less cost to the residents, we're doing what we're supposed to.
Mr. Pierce and I had that conversation too. I mean, being a nurse, we have to be flexible, and we have to be very adaptable to changes, okay? Changes occur when you're a nurse in the hospital all the time, and I was. However, we talked about it, that if there is a change, a restructuring, it has to be done properly.
Oh, absolutely.
And we're not going to cut you off here with the discussion, but until you get some budget numbers, this is just going to be a back and forth forever.
I agree. Sure, that's fine. And I'm presently working on the budget now, and we'll get that over, and we'll...
Please, thank you.
May I just mention one other thing? The x-ray equipment that we have was purchased in 1978, '75 or '78. We're having difficulty getting parts, and we have been looking into purchasing refurbished equipment, so we've been getting estimates, and we've been talking to Susan here in purchasing about getting bids out.
Yeah, I haven't been out there in a number of years, but it's not the Taj Mahal, all right? I, I had visited there years ago, so yeah, some of the equipment was, was pretty dated.
Mm-hmm.
If you could just put in like your footnotes for your reports as well, as far as future expenditures that you're looking at.
Sure. And we probably would be going on the levy this November.
Yeah, and you're very passionate about it. Thank you so much for the job you do, but we just need to look at the numbers, so...
I understand. And thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you. Mr. Ashenhurst?
I'll take less than three minutes.
Please.
Good, then I'm going to throw you out.
Yeah, well, I think this whole discussion, both the presentation, but also the discussion's kind of bizarre. I think when you see this, you should ask for the carryforward since 1968. They, five years ago, or four years ago, or whatever, they reduced it, maybe they're going to reduce it more. It's built up a surplus, and maybe it needs new equipment, but I don't think it's exactly, I mean, to debate the efficiencies of the delivery system, especially without the health department here as well...
We didn't know they were coming, David, or we would have tried to get everybody here.
We would have asked for all the information we normally ask for, budget, past five years.
Well, I'd like, as I say, this may be a longer carryforward. I sat on an ambulance district board that reduced its mileage when it was obvious that, you know, we had enough to carry us forward and for the rainy day and to replace the ambulances on schedule, and we had learned what it costs to run the ambulance district, and we were able to reduce it. I'd like to know the whole history of this levy. I also don't think that, I mean, I, I think this question about what employees are getting for free, you get into a real debate about the, the nature of public health versus everyday health. I mean, polio vaccines or something like that. I don't think, especially without other medical advisors talking about it, that the, the costs of preventive care for things like polio, tuberculosis, flu shots, I, you know, what we say about H1N1 is really uninformed, so it's not just numbers, it seems to me. And I think it's perfectly reasonable to say, maybe we just need, you know, the health levy to be adjusted and the, the services to be combined, but that's a different question than what we were talking about here, or what you'll get when you get your numbers. It seems to me that if, if the commissioners say, you know, we're going to question everybody else's levies as, as well as our own, without looking at a much different conversation, not just deeper, but different, with different considerations, and it, it seems to me that tussle should be somewhere with the general health district. I don't know why, there's a Lorain Health District that manages Avon Lake, and everybody else who isn't one of the big municipalities, you know, is in this general health district. That's a matter of history and efficiencies as well.
And David, a lot of those things have been being brought up. This is just a comment that Commissioner Koczyk noticed, the million-dollar carryover, and the TB clinic came to defend themselves. They didn't tell us they were coming or being an agenda item, so look at that.
I haven't, I haven't...
It made about $2 million a few years ago.
Ken Pierce yet to get a meeting with them. It's on the list of things to have a discussion over. It hasn't progressed past...
A comment.
A comment, and let's have a little talk.
I just, I was going to say, I hope you have a levy history and a carryforward history for many more years than just five.
Okay, I think you're past three minutes.
Okay, that's it, you're done, David. You took so much time. Thank you. All right, Rick, your turn.
That's what I was going to say, I thought that was a little more than three minutes.
Yeah, I think it was.
But I got some, I have some concerns on this, like if they are merged with the health department, priorities are going to be different.
Rick, you're asking questions we can't tell you about. We don't know.
Well, no, I'm not asking questions, I'm just saying I'm concerned that that would be a problem, that I could see with this.
That we'll find out in future meetings.
Right.
Oh, okay. And then the other thing is, shouldn't this be looked at more like, I have to pay automobile insurance? There's no payback on that, that's basically a state-mandated tax that I have to pay to public, and not even to the government, that goes to the private industry.
Well, driving's a privilege, so, I mean, you can get into that debate, but...
In the, in the 40s, they didn't, or maybe it was before that, they didn't even require driver's licenses, so if you had a car, you could drive.
Well, we evolved since the 40s, Rick.
Well, sometimes I wonder, sometimes I wonder.
One comment, one comment last week.
Shirley's on the rant.
I'm not on the rant.
We got you stirred up.
This was a comment Commissioner Koczyk saw, she saw a million-dollar carryover, and I think that's just what it was. And now we've got the, it wasn't a case that was brought to us, and we even haven't even looked into...
Right, that million dollars be ate up with one x-ray machine. If they get a digital, state-of-the-art thing, which would be nice, because then it wouldn't be obsolete.
I say they collaborate with one of these places where they're doing free TB tests and let them use their x-ray machine for as many x-rays as they have to do.
I think we're getting to a point where we're just going to continue talking and talking without any numbers.
Right, you're asking questions that mean nothing at this point, no offense, but I mean, you're getting farther than what, like I said, it was a comment made, we're looking at all shared services we've asked weekend to save the taxpayers' dollars. That's what we're doing.
But that comment didn't even make the paper, it was just that I brought up the S-T word.
Somebody watches our show. Hi, Shirley.
My comment is just an admonition. Be careful what cuts you suggest, particularly if you're going to get such nice, long reports full of information on each one.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
Mr. Newman?
Oh, boy, here we go.
Less than three minutes, probably.
We'll give you four.
That's portal-to-portal.
Just because you have a flag on your shirt, we'll give you four minutes.
And that's portal-to-portal from your chair to the podium included in that three minutes.
Oh, is that right? Okay. I'm speaking of Tom's comment about the judges. Seems that our judges are ignoring our commissioners' effort to reduce the budget. I would like to see a public hearing where our judges disrobed in front of the people who elected them.
Disrobed? Do you want them naked?
I want them off, that's right, disrobe them if we have to. Seems that they keep putting the commission off. For instance, when Commissioner Kalos spoke with the Judge Waller last week behind closed doors. There are three commissioners here, and we need to hear from everyone. So no more backdoor room.
It's not backdoor, I was communicating with the judge like I do with other...
You did it outside the public guy, the commission didn't even know it.
I had told the judges I was working with the judges.
Okay, well, simple enough, there's a sunshine law, do it in the light of day.
Sir, sunshine law requires, when you're two people making a decision, that's why two commissioners can't be sitting down with them, trying to figure ways of finding cost savings, because that's decisions being made a lot of times.
Well, our judges, our judges aren't even, aren't even talking to you. They, they went through the paper and put it out yesterday, you didn't know about it until it came out in the paper. They're not even talking to you. They want to do, they want to do trial by media, we can do that. But it's time to take the judges off behind the marble bench, take them off their, take them off their robes, and come in and sit down and talk to the people, because budget cuts have got to be made.
Thank you.
Anybody else dying to come up and talk to us?
If not, I'll make the motion to move an executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
I'll second.
Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Ms. Koczyk?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.